And I'm Jackson. Welcome to our last time meeting. We'd like to invite Jackie and JJ to come on down for the last hour meeting of the year.
Please welcome our last time meeting, we're all in for it too.
So I'm gonna let Proko come on down to help with the pleasure of meetings and the school song.
I salute you to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. From the halls of great day highest, from the sounds that shout success, we might go up the race and always shall be set. To our highest high seat one, with the golden flag we shine. We are proud to be the champions achieving excellence.
And I'm Taylor. Too many to count, why?
Do you wanna read a moral book this summer?
Yes.
Your own will please.
Introducing Jen Rummel from Craigan Memorial Library.
That was awesome, thank you. I also brought with me, sorry, I also brought Sam Hartney. She's my better half at the library. And we are here to talk about all the fun we're gonna have during summer reading. So here is our summer newsletters. It has everything going on this summer. And there's so much fun that we're gonna have. So we're just gonna share a few things. The first thing, once school is out, is we're gonna have a bubble party. And then every Wednesday night, we have family fun nights. So the fire department is coming and they're gonna bring the trucks. The police are coming and they're gonna bring Skipper, the police dog. Mel is coming and she's gonna talk about ice cream. And of course, she's going to bring ice cream. We have Josh from Champions Karate, who is going to come and do a karate demonstration. We're gonna have a dance party, we're gonna have some carnival games. So Wednesday nights is the place to be at the library, it's gonna be so much fun. Some other things we have at the library, we have messy Mondays. So if you like getting messy, we have that. This is corn syrup, we're gonna paint with that, which is gonna be messy and terrible and delicious. We have, if you like science experiments, we have some science kits that we'll be sharing. We have arts and crafts, so here's one of our 3D animal crafts that we'll be having. And we have an art watercolor class, so if you like painting, be sure to sign up for those. So some of the things you do have to register for, registration for both the reading part and the programs opens up on Monday. And when you read, you earn this bag, which we've just gotten today. You are the first people to see it. So this one says "All Together Now", which is our slogan, so we're all about community and kindness this summer. We have some prizes that go along with some of the people coming from our community. So you can adopt a dog, a stuffed dog, we have some of those. So once you read, you log your minutes, you earn money for our Craigan cash store, and these will be in there. We have some ice cream poppets for the week that Mel is there. We have some sticky ninjas for the week that Josh from Champions Karate is there. We have little beach balls, all sorts of fun summer stuff. We have some keychains and tattoos. We have a yoga event next Saturday that you do have to register for, and we have these little fun yoga ducks. And, oh, I forgot the really fun part, booty fun. So if you like making sweet treats, which we do, and we have a lot of, we have a weekly booty fun. And then, once you check out books in our teen, or our kids department, you can enter a weekly raffle for a different animal. This one is our dragon, which we love. And that's it for the kids department. Where are my fifth graders, soon to be sixth graders? Cool, okay. So that all information was for the younger craft. You all are invited to our teen program, since you're going into middle school. So here is your bag, it's a little bit different, the book bag. And there's a band on it, it is also "All Together Now". We have a lot of food programs too for teens, so we've got Cupcake Wars. We have Brand or Not Brand. We have candy sushi that we'll be making. Those, some of those you do have to register for, so again, that happens on Monday. We also have paint night, so if you like to paint, we've got a paint night. That's on Zoom, so you can register for that. Instead of the Beanie Babies, you all can check out books and get a raffle for a teen different Funkos of the week. And then in our prize store, we have rose sodas. This one is Dog Doodle, which sounds deliciously terrible. We have some different squishies. Well, they're not really squishies, but they're food funds. We have a mystery jar prize, so it could be something terrible or amazing, you never know what it's gonna be. We have Play-Doh. We have some Hello Kitty stickers. So we have a lot of different prizes for the kids and for the teams departments. We hope that you all have a great summer, we hope that you come see us and hang out, and also talk about books, because that's what we like, we like talking about books. Thank you so much.
Please welcome J and E, Jacob B, Lucas D, and Ryan L, or Ryan L and Jacob W.
They're gonna be performing our summer special.
Please welcome all classes in the middle of the grade to be respectfully addressed in position to perform the National Anthem.
Hartley sit down without a frown, out of respect for the anthem after it's performed.
We're back. Do you like art?
I love it.
I wonder who else loves art? It's time for the Artist Spotlight. Hi, I'm Ellie.
And I'm Jane.
And we're from the Art Egg Bar. We have chosen three pieces of amazing artwork for today's time meeting.
Students can submit artwork to the mapping block and it is voted on by the headboard.
Our awesome artists of this month are...
Your own will please. Hugo G, Neil Riley, and Ryan Martin.
Come on down.
Hugo, please. Hugo, pause your artwork.
I made this because I thought it was a lot of art, and then that led to a short. And then I made a short book. And I made, I made it a little bit more complicated and made six parts. I made this because I thought of an art book and it led to a short. Then I made...
Hugo, we love the crazy eyes and the colors.
Neil, please, tell us about your...
I decided to create this piece because I found out how to draw a butterfly and I knew how to draw flowers. First I drew the picture on pencil, then I traced in black crayon. Finally, I colored the whole piece with crayon. I decided to trace the black crayon because the butterfly and the flowers, um, all turned out. Weren't showing up.
Neil, we love the texture and all of the beautiful colors too.
My own, please tell us about your...
Recently, I read about how we all share this earth, and I agree with that. This earth is inhabited by plants, animals, and humans. So I decided to create one person demonstrating how we all share this earth. I drew a young girl with animal ears and a tail, with plants growing on her body, to represent us all as one. Her shirt is the earth, representing how we are all on it slash part of it. Before finishing my piece, I had to edit the plants, shade them, to make it look like it was part of her. And that is my piece.
Lila, we loved all the shading and the detail.
We can't wait to see all the great artwork that we'll exhibit next year.
Don't forget, be on the quest to draw your own back.
Good job to all our artists this year.
We want to create art, art and art who makes the difficult choices and love makes it into the time being.
Speaking of working hard, this Buckeyes class has been working with artist Wesley Johnson to create some poetry and appreciate some jazz.
Your own will please.
This Buckeyes class, come on down.
We have been working hard to make poems and do improv. We're doing improvisation on instruments and our own songs.
Let the jazz ignite your ears with tunes, like everywhere you want, calling your huge champion.
I think I especially love reading a book. Let the jazz control the band and replace it with love, one beautiful jazz song.
Let the jazz go over your fingers, wanting to change what you're feeling.
Let the jazz dissolve into beautiful music, ah.
Let the jazz take your emotion to a capital drifting in a lake of melody.
Let the jazz make me feel better, stronger, greater, deeper.
Let the jazz keep on moving, hungry life, creeping out of your brain.
Let the jazz wander around the world, making people obsessed.
Let the jazz put happiness into my heart as I hear the pounding piano music.
Let the jazz wipe tears from tears and gouge your heart like a never-ending river.
Let the jazz cast its spell of happiness on you.
Let the jazz read that popular song, like someone's gonna respond to it directly.
Let the jazz be like a hierarchy, launching off into space.
Let the jazz leave quiet thoughts for a happily, jumping from week to week, cheerful, wonderful.
Let the jazz comfort your hearts in the sky.
Let the jazz explode and join me on the road.
Oh, I hate seeing trash all over the ground.
Same, we need to save our earth.
But how?
Well, I heard that the Save Our Earth Proco knows about summer, about summertime conservation.
That sounds interesting. Come on down, Save Our Earth Proco.
Royal JJIS, we are the Save Our Earth Production Company, and we have been sorting, recycling, and collecting bottles and cans since the start of the year. Here are some scenarios to help all of us take care of the earth.
I'm saying that. That's where it goes.
One piece of chat, and mom likes my cat either, with a channel. But if you think of more pieces of earth, you make all the dead earths.
Oh, now I get it.
We have been tasked to connect two ways. Literals are water, literals are water, which is so okay, all of them things.
Ah, good morning, Mom.
Good morning, did you turn on your light?
What's the big idea about these lights?
I'll give you two reasons. One is the daylight, and two is the electricity.
Wow, those are such good reasons.
Ready?
Culture receives about fifteen hours of daylight. Today, use the sun for light instead of electric, electricity.
Yahahaha. Boom. I do that every time. I prefer plastic water bottles. They're beautiful and gorgeous. Okay, I'm sorry, I'll get myself a reusable water bottle that is shiny and gorgeous.
The KI has saved thirty thousand ninety-two gallons of water and three sodas of water recorded.
Thank you all for helping us save the earth and make a little ice cream money along the way.
We have one more question for the fourth grade writer, Hotley. Please welcome Hollis to read her essay, who is the greatest magician of our time. Please have a point.
The greatest magician of all time carries meaning for days. I think Mythic Lane is the greatest magician of all time, because Lane was much entertaining and impersonal. Lane also played with errors, although it's usually obvious that Lane is greater than he is. Lane didn't know what prepared spiders to be great at. Sure, he didn't have the means and the posters, but Lane's sisters, who he shared were too dangerous. He can just walk solid, and be very loud. Lane doesn't need to do only magic tricks. He sets and creates, even his own records. Lane is a notorious artist at following magician and illusionist like the Queen. That means, as well as doing magic, Lane tries to do tricky things as long as he can. For example, in this book called Drown the Light, Lane first bathed the glass sphere for an entire week. Then comes a really exciting part. Lane yet has a great record for closing his breath, which is originally eight minutes. The first of them, he... The first attempt, he failed at seventy minutes and thirty seconds. The second try, he worked it and held his breath for seventeen minutes and four and a half seconds. That's pretty impressive and intense. Lady is, of course, the best magician by heart. He is pure and great, and his tricks are more daring than interest rate. It should be obvious that Lady is, by heart, the greatest magician of all time.
You really enjoyed your S.A. and O.A.?
We got us on to Harvard's better magician, great genre and amazing details of the school's more here living.
I wish we could hear more poetry.
I want to hear more jazz.
Well, drummers, do your drumming.
Welcome.
Zaire.
Our word.
Leia.
And Ellie.
To give us more poetry.
And jazz.
Hi, I'm Charlotte.
Ellie.
This is Jay. We've been working with this much, so we can't actually play the piano, so we're not gonna show you.
We have been working on J.D. Gibber's scattering improvisation.
We also added movement and use instrument to make our pieces come alive.
We hope you enjoy our work.
Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Zaire, and I like playing the guitar.
Your name is Zaire, and you like playing guitar.
Channing, play trumpet, running. When I'm playing the guitar, the sound is going so far. When I'm playing chord and music, my guitar pick as a sword. My name is Zaire, and I like playing the guitar.
Your name is Zaire, and you like playing guitar.
Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Ellie, and I like softball.
Your name is Ellie, and you like softball.
Kaden. Running, fielding. When I hit a ball, I give it my all. I go to first base like I'm running Eris. My name is Ellie, and I like softball.
Your name is Ellie, and you like softball.
Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Leia, and I like dogs.
Your name is Leia, and you like dogs.
Licking, barking, haring, guarding. cuddle your puppy when you sleep. A perfect puppy bear to keep. My name is Leia, and I like dogs.
Your name is Leia, and you like dogs.
In my wonderful world, people look like the beautiful ocean waves warming up and down. Rainbows open the sky, making beautiful and amazing colors. Flowers blooming in the sun and in the great green grass. Birds chirping wonderful sounds in the skies. There are hearts all around on a nice day. Everyone is loving in my wonderful world. Clinders swirling around. A set I dream I want to tell all this peaceful.
Great job, everyone.
We would now like to welcome the Quiz Kids down to the last quiz show.
Drum roll, please. Quiz Kids, come on down. Quiz Kids, come on down.
Hello Jaguars, we are the...
Quiz Kids!
This will be our last time meeting. This will be our last quiz show of the year. We hope you all had a lot of fun.
Our contestants for Team One are Ding Armin, Bailey Cowell, and Emma Veruso.
Our contestants for Team Two are Ryan Ricardo, Jake Ford, and Maya Rodriguez.
Now it's time to...
Let the quiz begin!
Question one for Team One. In a per se writing, what is the counterclaim?
The counterclaim is to defend your argument against anyone else's argument.
That is correct. Question two for Team Two. What is two divided by one-third? That is correct. Question three for Team One. What is one-fourth divided by two? That is correct. Question number one for Team Two. How many hours on two and a half days?
Sixty.
That is correct. Question number two for Team Two. What is three point four times ten to the third power?
Three and a half.
That is correct. Question number three for Team Two. What is the definition of equator?
The line that splits everything between them is huge.
That is correct. It's time for a tiebreaker. Bonus question. What is one theory of what happened to the people at the Roman settlement?
The Boatsmen fired away from them.
Yes, that is correct. Team Two has won the game. With four points.
Which have reminded the class for all of the presentations.
Everybody have a fantastic summer!
Because these fourteen, fourteen of Lady's Ed Board members have come in since October and have gone to every aspect of planning, setting up, putting on, and sometimes breaking down, because sometimes we were late and they would visit us, all of the time evening. So, could you please help me say congratulations and thank you to our Ed Board members with a round of applause?
We are so happy to be such a great show, but like all the things, they want to set this chapter and begin new ones. They have said to our high and provided a great example for our new members. We know you all will start your way to storing your new school, so much like in happiness. When we call your name, come on up and grab your hands. Harper. Melody. Lila. Ryan. Maddie. Kim. Tegan. Taylor. Ellen. Angie. Nina. Ryder. Watson.
And now, before these Ed Board members leave, they have a job of announcing next year's Ed Board members. Now, something that Mrs. Heaven and I know that maybe not, we had almost thirty, thirty students apply to be Ed Board members for next year. And we can only take a small group, and the applications we got this year were amazing. And so, applause to all of the fourth graders who applied. Thank you so much. Are you ready?
My replacement is? My replacement is Jasmine.
My replacement is Adaliae H.
Eliza?
Eliza.
Eliza H.
My replacement will be Carson M.
My replacement will be Zachary M. My replacement will be Merade M.
My replacement, my replacement will be Albe. My replacement will be Grace W. My replacement will be Noracy. My replacement will be Aubrey H. My replacement will be Kendall Schultz. My replacement will be Jamil J. My replacement will be Abigail VZ.
We want to thank all of our seventh graders who committed their up to the team. It was a challenge, and they were a record, and they were a record-breaking number of submissions. They were all so fantastic. Keep ready and remember in the future, it could be you.
I can't believe this is my last time here.
I will really miss this.
And say goodbye.
To our performers.
For the twenty twenty-three Ed Board.
The fifth graders.
Our teachers.
And our drummers.
We need.
One last drum roll, please. Drummers, do one last drum roll.
Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar.
Thank you, Matthew.